Welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting, December 11th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in Room 3 at Town Hall. Our first order of business is to recognize some of our students here at Milford Public Schools. They're the 2017 MIAA State Cheerleading Champions, and we're very proud to have them here today. So, just want to start off by giving you ladies a round of applause. What I'd like to do is have your coach, Heather Johnson, come up and say a couple of words about her team here, and anything else you want to do, and maybe hear about your experience getting to this point.
You'll need a microphone, just so folks at home can hear you.
Yeah, just so people at watching can hear you.
That's fine. I'm not. Can I get up to stand? That's a question. All right. Well, thank you for having us. I appreciate it. My team are not only the 2017 champions, but we are the 2015, 2016, and 2017 champions. We are back-to-back-to-back.
That's awesome.
Yes. I competed, had 23 participants in the fall. We won the state championship on November 19th. We do compete co-ed. We do have two boys that are unable to be here tonight, so we won the large co-ed division for the state of Massachusetts. Do you have any questions?
Well, do you want to introduce your captains? Or do you want us, because again, we have citations for all of them, so we recognize them.
Yeah, I would love to introduce my captains. So, I do have three captains. One of them couldn't be here tonight because she's not feeling well, Stephanie McCray. Then I also have Gianna Lanzetta. You want to stand up, G? And Kirsten Buddington-Davis. They are the senior captains. Do you guys have anything that you would like to share?
You can sit down, but did you want to tell us anything about your experience?
I think that this season had a few ups and downs, but overall, like, the outcome of it really, like, just showed, like, that it's all worth it, and that we all love each other. We're all, like, one big family, so, I don't know, just winning, like, three years in a row has been such a great accomplishment, and, like, we just, we're all super happy about it.
That's awesome. Gianna?
Yeah, the same thing. We had a really rough start to our season, and, as you know, we had that car accident before states, and we went through a lot as a team this year, but, like Kirsten said, we all love each other, and we really just pushed through, and we had a really good season. So, it was nice, senior year, to go out with winning states, so...
Put a lot of pressure on the underclassmen to keep up.
Yeah, definitely. Well, that's funny, though, because they're already saying, "All right, so we've got to win next year." I'm like, "That's so much pressure." You've just got to go into every season, working hard as you can, and hope for the outcome to be as best as it possibly can, but they definitely have some big shoes to fill. I mean, this is our fourth championship in five years, so it's definitely quite an accomplishment for the team.
Well, Heather, it's also quite an accomplishment for you. You've been doing this for some time, and I know that you work them very hard, and they seem to like working for you.
Well, I hope so.
Very much to your credit as well.
And if not, that's all right. The end result shows for itself.
That's just an aspect of coaching, isn't it?
Right, exactly.
Heather, do you want to talk about what's next? I know the Nationals are coming up.
Sure, absolutely. So, we are heading to Dallas, Texas, January 25th through the 29th. We are going to be competing at NCA Nationals in Dallas. It's a very prestigious high school national, one of the two biggest ones in the country. This is our first time going there. We have attended Nationals in the past, but we went to Florida. This will be our first time there, so I'm super excited. I've never been to Texas, and not only is there going to be great competition, but there's a lot of historic stuff in Texas, so I'm super excited about that also.
First question, where were your T-shirts, back-to-back-to-back? You had them on the other night.
Yeah, we were going a little fancier today.
Oh, oh, oh. But again, like I said the other night, it's just another example of how proud the people in this community are of all of you for what you've done. And, yeah, next year's going to be a big year, and I'm sure the underclassmen will be able to carry through. You know, we wish you seniors the best, you know, going on, but again, thank you very, very much, and we're all very, very proud of you, as I said the other night at School Committee.
The good thing is, we do have eight juniors, so we do have, you know, a stacked set of juniors that have been doing this a while, so they'll be ready to lead the way.
That's great. No, thank you, Heather. First, I just want to read the list of your team. Ashley Zagamey, Caitlin Baglioni, Zoe Byrd, Kirsten Buddington-Davis, Haley Kaleri, Ariana Covino, Jada Crowley, Kelsey Dewest, Chevelle Feaster, Michaela Gerard, Ava Gonzalez, Gabby Johnson, Maddie Kadra, Emma Kincaid, Lucy Kincaid, Gianna Lanzetta, Stephanie McCray, Gillian Moran, Ally Nesta, Caitlin O'Connor, Tiago Pacheco, Catherine Schuler, and Maoko Yancy. And Heather, we also have a citation for each one of the ladies, but we also have one for you, and they all read, "Be it known that the Board of Selectmen hereby offer their congratulations," in this case Heather Johnson, Coach, "in recognition of a successful and exciting season in winning the 2017 MIAA State Cheerleading Championship. On behalf of the people of Milford, the Selectmen extend their very best wishes and express the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, given this 11th day of December 2017. Signed by Michael K. Walsh, William D. Buckley, and William Kincaid." So, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Ladies, I'll call you plenty up to come get your citation, and then maybe we'll take a recess, and we can have a group picture done for you out in the lobby, and that way you guys will end up in the crier as well. Caitlin Baglioni?
Thank you.
Zoe Byrd?
Thank you.
Haley Kaleri?
Thank you.
Ariana Covino?
Thank you.
Jada Crowley?
Thank you.
Kirsten Buddington-Davis?
Thank you.
Kelsey Dewest? Chevelle Feaster?
Get to Ally's.
Hey, you've got a big crowd here, so this is great. Michaela Gerard? I saw Michaela.
Thank you.
Ava Gonzalez? Gabby Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's all about the boots tonight, huh?
It's winter.
They're getting ready for Dallas. You've got to learn to wear the boots, and learn how to...
Perhaps a combined dance over there.
You have to learn how to mosey, though.
Emma Kincaid?
Thank you.
Lucy Kincaid?
There'll be no handshakes for nieces.
It's all nepotism, I think. Gianna?
Thank you.
Stephanie McCray?
Thank you.
Gillian Moran? Ally Nesta?
Congratulations, though.
Caitlin O'Connor?
Thank you.
Tiago Pacheco?
Thank you.
Catherine Schuler?
Thank you.
Maoko Yancy?
Thank you.
And Ashley Zagamey. I called you first. Give you a citation. Congratulations. I always feel bad, because the Z, I figured you'd get called last one. If we could... Yeah, I'm going to give these to Heather, and then if we can just take a short recess, Dan?
Thank you.
We can get them, a group picture?
I did.
First agenda item is signing of the warrant.
Mr. Chairman, I'll motion that we approve the signing of the warrant.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Also vote in the affirmative, and that's unanimous. We also have to approve minutes for November 27th.
Second?
I'll also make, vote in the affirmative and make that unanimous. And is there anyone here that's not on the agenda for invitation to speak? If not, I just want to make a quick announcement. Special Olympics Massachusetts is having the first-ever Young Athletes Unified Sports Program here in Milford that's going to begin on January 6th and run through February 17th on Saturdays between the hours of 9:30 and 11 at Milford High School. This is a unified sports program, so these are for children ages 2 to 10 with and without intellectual disabilities. So, anyone who's interested in enrolling or registering their child, they can go to specialolympicsma.org/MilfordYoungAthletesProgram, or you can also contact Jen Walsh over at Milford High School. So, it's just to get our younger special needs athletes along with our non-special needs athletes together before they get to the middle school and high school where they have best buddies in other unified sports. So, it's a really exciting opportunity, and that's starting, so I wanted to make that announcement. Next, we had three, potentially three tax hearings. All of those have been worked out. The last one, Rick and I just took care of in the hallway, so we are all set with our public hearings and scheduled appointments, if that's fair to say. So, I guess the next agenda item is to have the Finance Director in talking about the budget process and the timeline, along with our Town Accountant, Tom Brow. And our Chairman of the Finance Committee, Chris Moran.
I was a late add.
No, that's a last-minute add. You weren't on my list, Chris.
I can go sit in the back. No problem.
No, welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. So, it's that time of year, and I'm not talking about the holidays, so I wanted to put together a process here in the form of a timeline where, obviously, year in and year out, we go through this. It's a lengthy process, but we really, never really had it documented. I'm trying to document that, and put some important dates to, really, if I had to put a mission statement around it, make sure we have adequate time for, there's a lot of different stakeholders that are involved in setting a proper budget, and we've done a really good job with it. We just want to make sure that we continue the communication, have the proper input, and make sure we continue to do it proper. And how would you like me to handle it? Are you going to go through it, or you want to...
Yeah, if you just want to touch on it, I think just, you know, I think most importantly is, obviously, we all know how this process works, and I really like you submitting the formal timeline.
Yep.
And the people watching at home and through the Town Crier, I think it's good for people to know that the budget process for next year is already starting.
Yep.
Prior to this calendar year being over, so...
Awesome. So, I'm going to do a highlight and run-through per month. In January, what we had started, I'd say, a year ago now, was putting together a meeting between the Chairman of the Selectmen, the Chairman of the FinCom, which I asked Chris to come up with me tonight, and myself and the Town Administrator to really informally sit down and discuss what both committees and boards are really looking forward to seeing, what kind of ideas they have, and what they really want us to tackle for that year, input for goals and objectives for the year. And I thought it worked really well, and it was a great tool to keep communication flowing rather than in front of a meeting, you know? And at that time, to formalize it, what I'd like to do is really do a half-year review of the current year's results, both with revenue and expenditures. We already are starting to put together our preliminary revenue figures for the next year, following the state, and following Proposition 2 and 1/2, local receipts, all that stuff. We've been working heavily with capital requests, so at that time, it's a really good idea to review capital again, just to make sure we're on point and to set the proper threshold figures. But there's always articles outside of capital as well, and sometimes I don't think we've given the proper attention to really reviewing them upfront, so that's something that we're adding here as well. And at the same time, a lot of, we have a lot of different collective bargaining units, a lot of which are ongoing negotiations, or may, at the time, be within a three-year negotiation. So, we do know those, and it's, I think, smart to kind of revisit those and understand what has already been approved, to make sure that we don't get ourselves caught in a pickle there either. At that time, again, I think it's a great time to really discuss the objectives of each board, and then kind of put together a formal list, if you will, of the goals and objectives for the year, and then come back to this board and have a full review, full input at that level. Once we do that, and I'd like to get approval to move forward to the Finance Committee to kind of go through the same aspect and see what they have to add, and then just have a full community input at that point. At that time, we also have an executive subcommittee that we typically get together during budget season as well, which I've always found to be great also. At that time, typically, we're going to probably be into February, and we really should have a straight-up budget objective, a budget package prepared, a guideline, if you will. And over the years, through my department, we've had great communication through email, calling people, invitation, people come out to the office, and we go over it. We usually put out a memo, a customized budget input form, personal service package. This year, we're going to be looking to add an employee request summary that we had discussed at various times here. Rick and I are still working on that and plan on having that for this board's review at the next meeting in January. From there, obviously, got to give the departments time to put it together. We've always viewed my department as that guidance. Not everyone's an accountant, working with Excel skills and all that, so we really helped them put together, map out what the increases will be for the various unions and collective bargaining units there. And what we've had was a deadline of March 15th for all budgets to be back. During this whole time, the various subcommittees that the Finance Committee has assigned are all working with the different departments as well, so they're typically all caught up to speed, and then they come in front of the full Finance Committee to kind of update them as well. Once all budgets are back, one thing I think we have missed since I've been here was an opportunity for the Board of Selectmen to really review in great detail what these budgets are, rather than a summary from myself. I mean, how much can you really see with me sitting here? So, one thing I'm proposing, I really want to highlight on the second page in March, section, letter B, I should say, is putting together kind of a, I'm calling it a roundtable discussion, where we'll have, like, the full-blown-out detail of every single budget, and like, an opportunity to really sit down in a setting where we can go through it, answer questions, invite out department heads if we need to, to kind of go over any initiatives or changes or requests that may be outside of the straight-up guidelines. And that's what I'd like to hear some feedback on tonight. And from there, I have certain criteria on here for what I just said. If we need to have further information, can do it through the Finance Committee's subcommittees. You can bring people out to the Board of Selectmen, discuss it at the full FinCom, or, as I mentioned, right at that roundtable discussion. And if we need to obtain additional information, we can. Main point is, I want to make sure we have adequate time and review for these various boards and committees. At that time, we're looking to be in April, where we pull it all together, kind of review at a high level. Most of the details should be done at that point, and be able to look at the projected versus actual, make sure it still fits with sufficient room for our overall goals, that, as you know, a lot happened in the special town meeting, so it's important we stay disciplined with the operational budget at that time. And then, for years, we've been having the financial team meeting, which I really enjoy having, and think there's a big benefit there. And from there, we're in May, and we're looking at the annual vote.
Great.
So, that's what I have put together as a quick summary, and I was hoping to receive some feedback.
Well, just one thing that I want to touch on when I went through this is, and I'm glad you included it, was having that type of roundtable and letting us, you know, see the budgets, go through them, ask questions, have people justify them if necessary. So, that's something I'm very familiar with in my employment, and I think it's also a very good exercise. So, I'll turn it over to the Board, Bill.
When is it, Zach, that, and by the way, I appreciate the fact that you put this together, and, you know, I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to review it. When is it that you expect the draft budgets to be in for review, at least to your office?
We expect final for March 15th, but typically, it's funny, a lot of departments would jump on it immediately, they'll get it the next day. Others, like I mentioned, are looking for some guidance, so we'll schedule some time, sit down and help. But usually, late February, the majority are in.
Yeah, I'm just looking for the direction you're giving department heads to say, you know, "I need to have your best draft available by..." Usually, you get some dates.
Yeah, I'd say late February.
It's on the March, section A. It's on the date of March 15th.
Okay, there it is, March 15th. Thank you.
That's like the drop deadline, you know?
And, you know, you mentioned a lot of things in your comments, in your review of this document, and, you know, I think what's incumbent upon the Board is to specifically try to set some priorities, right?
Yep.
And we've been very focused on quality of life, those issues that are impacting our residents in a negative or positive way. And what I mean by negative or positive, there are impacts to building inspections Task Force. There are impacts where we look at certain properties. There are also, from a positive perspective, there's sustaining of existing services. You know, how do we sustain existing services? How do we look for new ways to do those and provide those services? And where there's cost-saving opportunities, where do we look for those? You know, obviously, the goal, no different than private sector, is in municipalities, is where we look to do more with less. And there are ways in which our department heads have been very creative in that respect. So, either we're computerizing something that was done manually in the past, where we benefited from grants. There's a host of ways in which we might be able to do that, to take the burden off the taxpayer, but sustain what we have in terms of best practices, and also, where there are initiatives, improve the quality of life for our residents. We realize not everything can be planned, not everything can be planned in a capital process, but refreshing the kind of rules around that, that the FinCom and this board expects is that, you know, we expect five-year capital plans. We expect that, that folks understand that there's a rotation, and that, you know, folks aren't jumping the line just simply because of, you know, who they may be able to influence or how that, the politics of things work, but really, that folks that have been taking a backdoor, waiting their turn in line, have an opportunity to improve their departments, do the things they need to, to get better at what they're doing. So, hopefully, we're sustaining those guidelines. Hopefully, people, at least from this board member's standpoint, are focused on safety, quality of life, and sustaining existing services. Those are the types of things that I would look for to be prominent in any budget. That budget starts at the top at this board with priorities, goals, and works through that. In addition, the Town Administrator has a great deal of items on his agenda.
Yep.
So, if there are, there are things that have come out from goals from this board in collaboration with the Town Administrator, Rick Maloney, refreshing of our policies. You know, I think there are other things that may be initiatives that this board may want to consider, and we can talk about that as we move forward in the next months, because Rick will have the same obligation as any other department, to hit that deadline on March 15th.
Absolutely.
So, hopefully, this board is thinking about the types of things it wants to see. I know HR has been a big part of our discussion here. We have 600-plus employees. We've talked about policies. We've danced around it a little bit in terms of how to maintain compliance with federal and state laws as it relates to sexual harassment and other regulated responsibilities and obligations that any employer has. So, I see that need coming up, and we'll be talking about it, I think, in future boards if that, future meetings, if that works with...
Right after the New Year.
My colleagues, great. That's all I have to...
Zach, you used a great word, communication. You can never have enough communication, you can never have enough transparency, and I think there's a lot of communities that are very envious of the town of Milford because of the way that we're managed, we're run, our boards act, our boards all work together. And this is a classic example of why.
Yep.
You know, here we are, putting together a process, and in the private sector, we talk about process all day long. If you don't have process, you never get the end result. And so, this is just a great, you know, layout of where you expect everybody to be, but again, I go back to the communication. There can never, ever, ever be enough communication between the department heads, between the boards that are in the community, and I take my hat off to Chris Moran and the Finance Committee. I think they do a great job really, truly communicating with all the department heads and getting everybody on board, and if somebody is frustrated or somebody has a concern, you sit down and you explain both sides of the equation, and that's what makes it work. So, great, great job. And I think that, you know, I think you'll hit the March 15th deadline, and I don't think you're going to have any problem with it at all, and I say, you know, just great job, you know, keep everybody communicating, because that's the key to it. That's the key to it. And one thing I want to touch on, and you always have been, as Chris has in the Finance Committee, is you're available, because there are going to be department heads that are, just don't have some of the, they have great skill sets over here, but they don't necessarily have, you know, like you said, they're not accountants, they're not the Chairman of the Finance Committee, and they're going to need someone to help them.
They always have an open-door policy.
Exactly, and you always have, you always have. So, I just wanted to say thank you and great job.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, thank you for coming in. Thank you for having this outline. I think this is something great that we can go by. How is your office doing, your team?
Good.
Can you just fill us in a little bit?
Yeah, things are going well.
Okay.
Tom's three months in now.
He hit the ground running.
Yeah.
I've heard that repeatedly, so congratulations, and thank you for being there.
Yeah. So, I think what I'd like to do now is get with Rick and look at the schedule, and actually put some, like, real dates to this rather than just monthly.
Great.
You know? And then, from there, we look forward to get through in the holidays, and then we'll have our meeting.
Yep, and our first January meeting, we can schedule, or if not before, we can schedule when you, at least preliminarily, when you want to have that roundtable in our, you know, with the department heads and to go through the budgets.
It's just a nice way to see that this budget never ends. I know that the fiscal year starts July 1st, and I know I can speak for Zach, that July 2nd, I start thinking about next year.
Yeah.
Like, that's just as soon as it gets done, I'm automatically thinking of next year, and people don't really realize that the budget process takes that long. And I want to compliment Zach and Tom on this outline, because we've never really had something like this before. We've always known what we needed to do, and we always did it.
Yep.
But it's nice to see it written down in an outline form here to identify, to people who are not directly involved, the processes that we go through in order to maintain the budget, because, you know, if they just watch some meetings, they don't know how all these puzzle pieces are put together, because it is a big puzzle, and to Mike's point, other departments need to know that maybe they're going without this year because another department needed something this year, and that communication is what gives them that sense that, "Oh, I'm not losing out for no reason, it's because of this." But they know next year, when something's important to them, that they are now the priority, because not everyone can get everything at the same time. But we find a way through communication, through your board, through Zach, and through the Finance Committee, that we will get you what you need, just, we need time to work on it, and that's why this extended budget process allows us to put that puzzle together so that we can have the finished picture at the end and have everything work, so...
Great job.
Great. Well, thank you guys for coming in and...
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Communicating back.
Go Pats, awesome. Yeah.
20 minutes. All right, next agenda item is the Town Administrator's report. Rick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few items tonight. I do want to update the Board on the progress of the ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. We have already had an initial meeting with our consultants, Michael Kennedy and James Mazek, to review the project goals and objectives. Attending the meeting were Jen Walsh, Chair of the Commission on Disability, Dino DiBartolome, Commission on Disability Member, Rob Quinn, Facilities Director of the Schools, Kathy Perry, School Business Superintendent, and Mike Brishani, POCS Director, and myself. We reviewed a timeline, or at least a tentative timeline, for the plan and steps to begin the... We reviewed a timeline, or at least a tentative timeline, for the plan and steps to begin the plan. The first step has already been accomplished. We sent a survey to each department head member to complete. It was prepared by the consultants. All surveys have been returned. Last Thursday, December seventh, we had a meeting with all department heads, including the school and parks, to review the survey forms with the consultants and for them to hear from the consultants, the expectations for each department head going forward. The consultant has also begun the onsite assessments. We have concluded the Highway Department and the Senior Center. We have also started the onsite assessment of Town Hall. The plan is to hopefully accomplish the town buildings first by doing those onsite assessments, and then coordinating with the school representatives, which they've already done, so that those onsite assessments can be done during vacation periods, which would allow them access to the schools without disrupting the school day for each school. Once the assessments are completed, then the consultants will then begin the tedious task of preparing the self-evaluation and transition plan. This will specify structural as well as non-structural methods to bar removal of physical obstacles that limit accessibility and include class estimates. That will be important, so that we can include them, maybe within budget to take care of, maybe they won't be monetary in nature. And then also some will be, and then we'll have to deal with it maybe on a capital plan going forward. We also anticipate presentations to this board before the plan is complete, so that any ideas the board members might have, they can bring to the table. We also intend to present to the Commission on Disability. So part of the consultant's study is presentations to various boards and committees. So I'm excited about the project, it's moving forward, and, and there's a lot of, still a lot of work to be done. Just a couple of other minor announcements. Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, this year will be open all day on Friday, December twenty-second, all day on Friday, December twenty-ninth. We'll reopen on December twenty-sixth, the day after Christmas, and January second, the day after New Year's. Again, I want to thank Senior Custodian Carlos Benjamin, members of the Fire Department, Highway Surveyor Scott Christofouli, and members of the Highway Department. They're the ones who put up the Christmas banners, the Christmas wreaths along Main Street. As always, their efforts are most appreciated. And finally, I did provide to the board in their packet a tentative draft for the department head roundtable meeting that this board discussed at our last meeting, which I think was November sixteenth or the meeting prior. The board, at that time, suggested that each department, board, committee, and schools list their top three priorities, share best practices, suggest areas where mutual cooperation will be of benefit to various departments. As we know, certain departments need to work very closely together. Tax collector and assessors, for example, finance and accounting, for example. So I did put together just a tentative things for the board to consider, nothing there fixed in stone. However, there's some items there for you to consider. We're looking at a tentative date of January eighteenth, which I believe is a Thursday in the upper Town Hall, assuming we can pull it off and, and get everything ready for that timeframe. So again, looking for some feedback from, from, from the board members on that. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
All right. No, thank you, Rick. No, and I appreciate very much the draft, because I think, again, if other members want to make, make changes or recommend some changes to your draft, at the very least, I think it's, I think it, it's good, and it will get the dialogue started, which is, I think, most important. Because whatever comes, whatever conversation comes out of priorities and best practices and where mutual cooperation can benefit, I think that'll, that'll lead to, to a lot of other active communication, so. I don't know, Bill or Mike, anything you want to add to, to his draft roundtable agenda?
Yeah, the, I, I think we're in a good space in terms of setting an agenda which the different departments can follow, know what's expected, know what to bring, and know what, what other departments are going to share, and that's important. Just a clarity, you know, for B. I think, I think what we're talking about, ways in which their department will improve, provide improved customer service. In other words, it's not necessarily an opportunity to point to another department, but to say the types of things their, their department is going to focus.
And I think the, the benefit is to the, to the, to the draft coinciding with the fact that we're going to be leading this meeting, we'll be, we'll be, we've called for it. Granted, at the recommendation of, of another group, but they've asked us, even when they brought it up at the Board of Assessors meeting was to, for us to, to lead this and run this meeting. So we're going to be able to bring up and, and get dialogue and, and, you know, not just lead the meeting, but also lead the conversation. So, you know, whether we put, you know, additional agenda items on this or we just come to the meeting prepared on, by then, what we want to talk about. And again, I think it's very important that we have a dialogue, so.
And I think, you know, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea, Mr. Chairman, depending on how you and Mike feel about it, that the board take a, a swing at the same types of information presentation and sharing.
Absolutely. Oh, I think we have to.
That does make sense, right?
Oh, yeah, we're included in that.
So we ought to share our top three priorities, for example, where best practices are being implemented and things that might help other departments.
Okay.
Sounds good, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mike, anything to, anything to add?
Just real quick, once again, I go back to process. You know, it's, 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 it's not finalized, but it's a start. Will used a great word, again, communication. There can never be enough communication between all the departments in the town. Best practice, I think that some people have to be able to, there are going to be some departments that are gonna, that are going to have to be on, they have to understand that other departments may be operating more cost-efficient, more effective, and they need to understand that, that we all share best practice. And it's not about, you're not doing a good job, or you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing, it's about best practice. And we may want to take something that one department is doing and move it into your department. And I couldn't agree with Bill Moore, there's, there's, there's an old saying, it all starts at the top. So we evaluate ourselves and we pick our three priorities, we send an example out to the, to all the department heads and to the community that we ourselves want to assess ourselves. As the Board of Selectmen, you know, what are we doing right, what could we do better? Because we're no different, we're no different. So that's a great idea. So I think it's a great start, Rick. I thank you for putting it together, and hopefully, we can hit our, hit our date of January eighteenth.
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, just if I might, is there a reason why we can't finalize that, since I think Rick took our inputs, combined inputs? Is there a reason? Because I think, I think you've got to work with the various departments to say what the expectation is. I don't want to think it's a moving target.
Put together a notice that will go to them, that something similar to this, finalize the eighteenth. I don't see any reason why you cannot, if this board is so inclined.
I'd make a motion, I'd, I'd make a motion that that be the agenda, that be the target date, and with that one point of clarification on item B, I'm good to finalize, if the board members are so inclined.
I would second that, absolutely.
I'll also vote in affirmative and make that unanimous. And I think, again, you know, something that I see on a regular basis, you know, doing office hours here at Town Hall once a month for the last couple of years, it's amazing, whether it's phone calls that, you know, your gentlemen get, or when people come to the office to, to speak face-to-face, you know, they come with, come to me anyway with a myriad of different issues, not just ones that are, that the Milford Board of Selectmen are responsible for. But what people don't want to be told is, oh, that's, that's this independent board or that independent board. So when I get something about trash pickup, I reach out to the Board of Health, I reach back to the constituent, we're both, we both work together. So I think this is just, you know, a more formal process of what we deal with on a everyday basis. And quite also, and again, I have to, you know, I want to give credit to the, to the Board of Assessors for, when I was invited to that meeting to attend. This was a priority of theirs, and they were hoping that we would, you know, take it and run with it, and we have. I just saw Joe Arcudi as he takes his daily walk on Highland Street, and I, I pulled over and we chatted, and I let him know that this is going to be a conversation piece, and he, he was very happy about that. So I think it's important that we support each other, and, you know, even though we're all independently elected, that we work together behind the scenes, we should be working together in front as well, so people can see that. Anything else for Rick, gentlemen? And then we move on to old business. Our first and only formal issue of old business is the marijuana ballot question. Jerry, if you want to come up? You two are having fun back there. You made me laugh a couple of times.
The cop was a great deal today.
All right, Jerry, give us an update and where we can go from here. I know eventually we have to set a date, I don't know if that's in a rush yet, so.
May not be yet, because, you know, I gave you the, the language for a draft ballot question for a second ballot, you know, shortly after the town meeting. The Attorney General has ninety days to approve any zoning article. They usually take the full ninety days. Now we're about thirty days into that. But I spoke to them this, well, this past week, and they thought they would have that done this week. So the best, if you scheduled something tonight and start that process off, and then something came out of the Attorney General's opinion that caused us to have to change it, why do that? Let's wait to see what the Attorney General does.
Yeah, we've been there.
We wanted to do this once.
Done that once.
Or one more time.
We did that, and they changed the law on us. So the best, at this stage, if we waited a couple of weeks to your next meeting to see if the Attorney General's made a decision, if they have good, then we'll know exactly what we have to do and what to write. If they haven't, well, then perhaps we go ahead and schedule it anyway. I think there's sufficient time, if you wait till your next meeting, there's still be plenty of time to get it done well before what some people feel is an important date in April. Whatever we're going to do. And again, I think it's going to go forward as I've given you, I don't see any reason it won't, I don't expect anything different will come from the Attorney General, but it could happen. So you may as well wait a couple of weeks and see what happens.
Questions?
No, other than there was MMA article that came out in the newsletter piqued my curiosity, because it, what it talked about is that the guidelines won't necessarily all be out prior to permitting application beginning. And one of the areas that the MMA suggested that boards consider as they come up with questions, ballots, whatever, is the piece that has largely been not talked about, and that was specifically the bring your own or consume at a, at a location, at an establishment. I'm not sure why the MMA thought that was important, but just something for you to consider in the language as you go through the process. Is it an area that we need to touch on? What's your counsel and recommendation?
Ballot question, probably not. BYOM, I guess would be, as opposed to BYOB. BYOP, I'm not sure what would be best. It's going to be, you know, in terms of the establishments we have in town that don't have a liquor license, you know, you can regulate that.
Restaurants, restaurants?
But we do have, there's no smoking in most of these, I think in all restaurants, the Board of Health. So we're probably pretty safe in that regard, and it doesn't hurt your board to double down on the licenses as you issued, put a condition on all licenses going forward forbidding any usage of marijuana on-site in addition to the Board of Health regulations. But I think the Board of Health regulations would eliminate any possibility of the, of the smoking.
If you get a chance, as you're talking, folks, yeah. It was just an MMA recommendation, Mass Municipal Association, for the people at home that don't understand the acronym.
Cities and towns want to look at a lot of these possibilities, I mean, there are
They can be endless.
They are endless, smoking marijuana on parks, is it allowed, is it not allowed, Fino Field, baseball fields, is it allowed or isn't it allowed? Yeah, those things really should be looked at.
Okay.
But again, for the sake of this ballot question, I mean, it's got to be what we voted on at town meeting, unless the AG comes back.
It has some quirk, which I can't even imagine right now, but I expect, I might anticipate they'll come back saying, yes, your bylaw is fine as a zoning bylaw, but I think it'll be their recommendation that we take another vote just to be safe. As you know, it's my view right now, when the Attorney, if the Attorney General approves the bylaw, we have a full ban in effect, and I have no concern about that from my perspective. But I fully understand the desire to really nail that down and have a second vote that presumably would, would then be approved with that amendment that came at town meeting.
Mike?
Good, Mr. Chairman.
I'm good.
All right, is that it? All right. Any, we'll see you in a little while. Any other old business? Bill?
No, no old business for me, Mr. Chairman.
I don't have any, either, any new business.
Yeah, two items, Mr. Chairman. I had asked Rick to look into something. I don't need an answer tonight, but just out of correspondence with a resident, some concerns about property that we look like it might be in tax title or something.
Yes, it is.
It is, okay. A property that's been in tax title for some time?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know when that year is?
I don't. Again, this board has discussed this property, Bill, before, so.
All right. This is on Princeton. Okay. What I'd like to do is just get an update from, for all the members of the board.
I can get that out there first thing in the morning.
What its status is, and, you know, it's my, my understanding, it's falling into disrepair, and, you know, Jerry, I'll say it for your benefit as well as the board, what I, what I'm worried about, and I want to be mindful of, is the tax title process. You know, there's a belief out there that through, either through tax title or, you know, catching up on delinquent taxes, that the, that the residents always are going to remain whole, well, we always get it back type idea. And either through penalties, interest, or, or seizure, which is the last thing we want to do as a municipality. And what I'm learning is, depending on the situation, that may or may not be true, right? And, and we have one case in point where we're looking at Dill Street, where that is, is very low likelihood that the, that the taxpayer would remain whole for all the costs associated with that. So I just want to be mindful that depending on the situation, how long it takes and how far they're in the rear, there may not be a ability to recover everything that might be owed to the taxpayer. So when folks say that, that's not always the case, right? So just something to be aware of. And this looks to be a property on Princeton, as Rick comes out with more information, that's been in tax title for quite a while, so that, that we've talked about, but I guess is it's falling into greater disrepair, so. I'll just get that update. The last thing I have is, I wonder, Rick, if you could ask the Board of Health if in their future plans, whether it be this year, next year, the year after, that we look at completely replacing our recycle bins. I notice other towns are doing it, they're going to closed containers. And anecdotally, I can tell you, at least from my street, one of the greatest causes of litter is what the wind will do to the small bins and barrels and how things blow around. I appreciate and respect all of the Board of Health's efforts, and I'm a, I'm a big recycler, I believe in it strongly. But I think when we go to collect recycle, we want everything to stay in the recycle bins. I think this is problematic. I think this is an issue that's not just an issue on my street. When these bins tip over, or when the, the open items, the open bins allow things to blow out, it's just another place where we get our towns looking, our streets looking like they shouldn't. And it causes perception problem. So I wonder if we could ask the Board of Health what other towns are doing, what grants are available, what ways in which, creative ways in which we might be able to implement that either over time or in one-year period, and what it would take to do that in closed containers. I, I've bought them, by the way. Personally, I bought the, the wheeled closed containers, and the truck just picks them up and dumps them in, and it's with little fanfare and not any littering, so. You know, I think it's, it's time we start to look at that, and maybe the Board of Health can help us to get there. Thank you.
That's a great idea. Mike?
Mr. Chairman, I only have one. I'd like to know if it's possible, we could bring before us, to personally thank them, the committee that put the Santa parade on. You know, you and I were together that night in front of Town Hall. Yeah, and it was, it was, I think the chief, police chief was quoted as the largest crowd ever. Part of it was, it was a nice night, it wasn't too cold. But I think we should bring that committee together before us, so that we can personally, personally thank them, because that's just another example of the great things
Absolutely.
that we do in this community. That parade was absolutely over the top, over the top. And I think we need to personally, as from the Board of Selectmen, say thank you, and we appreciate everything you do.
All right, great. Rick, can we get them on the next agenda?
Sure.
No, Mike, that's, that's great. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. I do want to mention the correspondence from the Citizens from Milford regarding, it's a letter that Peter Scandoni, the Medal of Liberty Committee and Field of Flags Committee Chairman, sent to John Pillar, thanking him. We acknowledged, he acknowledged John Pillar's assistance through that whole program. I know we were there at that ceremony, very moving ceremony. I've never, I've never seen that before, and I'm glad that we, we've adopted that here in Milford through John Pillar and the Citizens from Milford, because we had a number of young men that were killed in action here in Milford in both World Wars, Korea, Vietnam, and the First Gulf War. and the First Gulf War, that were acknowledged. So that was, that was quite a tribute. And the other members of the committee were Vinnie Civazari, Matty Venziano, Joanne DiMaria Morgan, and Steve Trettle, and they did a great job.